Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting for the Village of Holly. Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinberger?
Here.
Wendell?
Here, Ms. Wendell.
Ryan?
Here.
Cascola?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Kyer?
Here.
Brandon?
Here. We have a quorum. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This brings us to the approval of our Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Village Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed separately immediately after Consent Agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Lisa, can you please read the Consent Agenda?
A, Agenda Approval; B, Consideration of the Approval of Village Council Minutes of August 12th, 2025; acknowledgement of the Acceptance of the Planning Commission Minutes of May 28th, 2025; D, Acknowledgement of the Acceptance of the Village of Holly Downtown Development Authority Minutes of July 14th, 2025; E, Consideration for Approval of the Special Event Application for Holly's Mischief and Magic on October 24th, 2025; F, Consideration for Approval of the Special Event Application for the 32nd Annual Downtown Holly Ween on October 25th, 2025; G, Consideration for Approval of the Special Event Application for the Holly Dickens Festival on November 29th through 30th, December 6th through 7th, and December 13th through 14th, 2025; H, Consideration for the Approval of the Special Event Application for the Holly Dickens Festival Lighted Parade on November 28th, 2025; I, Acknowledgement of Receipt of Memorandum of Understanding between the Holly Police Department and the Holly Officers Labor Council; J, Consideration for Approval of the Inter-local Agreement between the Village of Holly and Western Oakland Transit Authority for Smart Credit Transfer; K, Consideration for Approval of Traffic Control Order 25-01 for Stop Sign Removal on Sherman Street for Eastbound Traffic at East Street; L, Consideration for Approval of TCO 25-02 for the Installation of a Crosswalk on East Maple Street; M, Consideration for Approval of TCO 25-03 for the Installation of a Stop Sign on Fenwick Street at Harden Street; N, Consideration of the Acceptance of the Resignation of Doug Grossbener from the Village of Holly Historic District Commission; O, Acknowledgement of Receipt of Business Registration for Sweet Puffs Smoke Shop; P, Acknowledgement of Receipt of Business Registration for Sip and Saddle Social Club; and Q, Consideration of the Approval of Warrant 2025-009 in the Amount of $1,532,491.92.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Wendell, you mentioned you might want something pulled for discussion?
Yeah, Consent Agenda H, the Consideration of the Approval for the Application for the Holly Dickens Lighted Parade.
Okay, we will take H and we will move it after K.
I would also like to see K be discussed.
The stop sign?
Yes.
We will take Consent K and move it after letter H on the regular agenda.
And possibly letter L.
I'm sorry, you said letter L?
Yeah, the crosswalk.
Okay, we will take letter L, Consent L, and move it after...to the end of the regular agenda. Anything else, Council? I will entertain a motion to approve the amended Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended Consent Agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Wendell. We have a second by Cole. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. This brings us to tonight's presentation. Tonight's presentation is a Citizen Recognition. The Village of Holly presents the President's Citizen Recognition Award to Jessica Riddle. Ms. Riddle, would you please take the stand?
Uh-oh. Return her man.
It's right there. It's not very often that I get to recognize personal friends, and you're about to hear why. Good evening. It is my honor, on behalf of the Village of Holly, to present the President's Citizen Recognition Award to Jessica Riddle. Jessica embodies the very best of citizenship. She has demonstrated exceptional character and serves as a role model, especially for our young people. Through her outreach as a librarian at the Holly Township Library, Jessica has created a welcoming space where teens feel included, where they can explore their creativity, learn practical life skills, and grow into engaged, confident members of our community. When Jessica learned that our schools no longer had libraries...you heard me right. She did not accept the status quo. She met with school staff and forged a partnership between the middle school, the high school, and the Holly Library and restored student access to books and resources. These students can request books through their school, and library staff will prepare and fulfill those requests so students can continue discovering through the world of reading. Every student in our district, regardless of address, can now obtain a Holly Library card as well. Jessica has also carried our community's voice to Lansing, advocating for library resources at the state level. Jessica's service extends beyond books. She helps run the Holly Library Food Pantry and the Community Garden, a program that engages teenagers to plant, tend, and harvest food that is then provided to neighbors in need. That project not only feeds families, it teaches stewardship, responsibility, and compassion. Jessica, your leadership, perseverance, and determination have made Holly stronger and kinder. You have given young people opportunities, restored access to learning, and shown what community care truly looks like. Now, if you look around, you may have noticed many of us are wearing purple tonight. That's Jessica's favorite color.
It is.
Jessica, not only do you inspire people to read, plant, and serve, but you apparently inspire us to coordinate our outfits, too. I hope our appreciation is half as loud as your favorite color. Just know you can't hush us tonight. Please join me in thanking and congratulating Jessica Riddle as we present the Village of Holly President's Citizen Recognition Award.
Jessica, will you please accept this on behalf of...notice that's purple and red in paper. On behalf of mine.
It's like nesting.
Regina did. Which is also purple. I'm gonna come up and shake it.
I am truly honored to receive this award and honestly, super overwhelmed. I'm not much for being in the spotlight, but I am proud of the work that I've been able to do and I'm grateful to be a part of this community. When I saw that the students in our middle and high schools didn't have functional libraries, I couldn't just sit back and ignore it. It took a lot of pushing and persistence to make the school partnership happen, and I'm proud that I was in a position to be able to fight for it and to make sure our kids have truly equitable access to the resources they need and deserve. I'm also deeply grateful to my director, the library board, both past and present, for supporting and trusting my out-of-the-box ideas and for all the staff and volunteers who make programs like the Food Pantry, Community Garden, and teen programs actually work. With their support, I was able to lead these efforts and I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish together. The library has always been about more to me than just books. It's about connection, belonging, and possibility. If the work that I've done has helped even a few people feel seen, supported, or inspired, then that is the real reward. Thank you to the Village of Holly and to everyone who has supported these efforts and to this amazing community for letting me do this work. It's a privilege and I'm excited for what we can continue to accomplish together.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess so people can mingle and then leave if you don't care to stay for the rest of Council. Jessica, can I steal you for a picture with the Council back here? Can someone photograph for me, please?
Mr. Photograph for Tim?
We have a photographer here. We have journalists.
Oh, yeah.
Review the permission of the village to record these documents so I can get my, my addresses, my property ID numbers and go ahead and start leasing these out. I do have copies of, of the, um, the corrections made to the master deed and bylaws. I've highlighted them. You'll see how easy it really is. Um, if I can pass these out real quick. Second page is just the signatorial page. The highlighted pages I supplied to you are the changes in the master deed as requested by the attorney. And then the second were the additions to the bylaws requested by the attorney almost verbatim to his letter.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Um, can I have your email address and we'll be in touch?
Yes, it's WMBYE. So that's short for William By at iCloud.com.
At iCloud.com?
iCloud.com.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Public comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Diane Ducat, 802 Holly Bush. I just want to say thank you for the Holly days, Mr. Price. You did Holly proud.
Sarah.
I stayed till the last note at 11:00. It was fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Public comment. I thought I saw a hand. Sarah.
My name is Sarah McCanney, 501 East Maple Street. I'm a longtime Village Parks Commissioner and an even longer time Village Volunteer. I wanted to make it a point to come before the council to express how much I appreciated the council taking such an active interest in this year's Holly Day celebration. I specifically wanted to mention Amber Keier, Shannon Cole, Danielle Wendell, April Brandon, Jim Cosgala, Mr. Price, Mr. Clausen, Chief Narsh, and Chief Watson. Should have done a bigger font, sorry. Each, each one of you guys volunteered your personal time and your energy into planning and organizing and running this year's festivities. This is an all-volunteer event. Your enthusiasm for our village really does make all of the difference because the Cary Nation Festival in its heyday was as successful as it was because it had the complete support and the collaboration of all of the powers that be in Holly. This reminds me a lot of those days, so I am feeling very optimistic for the future of this community event. I also wanted to make a mention of a few other names while I was here and on the record. The Holly Moose Lodge 1168, specifically Chris Compton and Mo, Maureen Coretti. They were the behind-the-scenes ultra-superstars of this event. They were also, we're also grateful for the participation from our Holly DDA Board, our Holly Farmers Market, and the Village Parks Commissioner, Tim Taylor, and Jane Bias De Sessa, Jackie Huttons, Jerome Raska, Hillary Algaier, Dan Precup, and Matt G. Again, thank you guys for everything that you did put into this for our community. I saw so many people out enjoying the community, the company of their neighbors, and I saw families playing together, and I saw kids making those core memories. And I know that it's a lot of work, but those are the reasons that I do it. So I was honored to have been able to do it alongside you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Madam President, can I, I know that's kind of, don't usually, but before Sarah leaves...
Oh, you don't get to leave.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, because I have a, in my reports, I have like a whole paragraph on this, but like simply put, it would not have existed if it wasn't for what Sarah did.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
She started the process, she, um, she reluctantly, she didn't want to leave it, but she like stepped in when, in that, that vacuum. I'd never seen it before and like she pushed it through even when everything else is going on. Um, every volunteer, you know, was coordinated, you know, through her. Just amazing. I, like, the village owes her for everything in this.
But I would have thrown in the towel if it wasn't for all of you guys stepping up, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Sarah. Where were we?
Still public comment.
Oh, public comment.
While they're basking in the gold.
Yeah. Hearing none? That was a tough act to follow. Hearing none and seeing none? Speaking of small font, New Business. Lisa, will you please read item A of New Business?
Consideration of Resolution 2025-021 Confirming the Village President's Appointment of Janice Van, Vanzel, I'm, I'm sorry, Sanfeldy?
Vanzeldy.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sanfeldy to the Village of Holly Historic District Commission.
Do I have a first to consider item A of New Business?
I'll make a motion to consider item A of New Business.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell. We have support by, who did we have support by?
Buster.
We have support by Buster. Okay, so, um, first, any public comment on this item? Hearing none? Seeing none? Counsel?
I have one very fast, simple, is she, uh, after today, she'll be on the commission then?
After she's sworn in, if she's approved today and if she accepts.
But if everything, if everything goes, because George called me because we're sure some members, making sure I be there.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure that we get the ball rolling quick as possible.
Their, their appointment is effective as soon as you approve it and then they have to get sworn in by the clerk.
That means Lisa, well.
Counsel.
Comment I got. That was it.
I do have one comment. Janice has been coming to our meetings since I first was appointed, which isn't very long, but I appreciate you attending meetings and then throwing your hat into it too. I appreciate it.
Counsel? I see you thinking, Jim.
I mentioned last time, I think we should, uh, talk to the individual that's here.
She's...
And you're right here, so is there anything you'd like to say or introduce yourself to people that may not know you?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
In way of introduction, as she's coming up, as mentioned, Jan has been coming to our meetings. I think the first time, like I was really introduced to her was in our April Town Hall and when, she had a lot of questions and has been engaged in since then. We've had several emails back and forth as well as many conversations about different ways that she could get involved in the community. And, uh, you know, through talking about different boards and commissions, we felt like this might be a good fit based on her interests and, you know, the, her, how she wants to engage the community.
It's all yours.
I couldn't have said it any better. Thank you, Tim. Um, yeah, I'm just looking to get involved in the community and, um, just, I did a little research on the different, um, boards and committees in the community and some of them are a little bit more time-consuming and require a little bit more knowledge. And so, um, I feel like the Historic District, I read through, um, the charter and I was like, okay, I can handle this. And, um, the time commitment seems to fit into my schedule. I do have, um, a lot of things happening in my life right now, but, um, I am excited to see what the Historic District is, um, going to do moving forward because I did do a little research to see like maybe some past history of what's happened and, um, you know, what maybe the council is desiring to see in the future as far as actually, um, making sure that people follow the, the charter and, um, yeah, so.
The guidelines.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. Oh, yeah, we can do that. That was for you, Watson walking in.
Yeah, Watson, yeah!
All right, so I also, Jim, have her resume in front of me. She has a Bachelor of Science and she studied criminal law. She's a deputy clerk at a courthouse. I'm not going to say which one publicly. I don't feel comfortable with that. She's a parent volunteer at a school and she's a, uh, parent volunteer for some of the extracurricular activities for the kids as well. I think that's enough of that. I don't want to get too personal on the mic. Okay, counsel, anything else? Okay. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Weinberger?
Yes.
Cosgala?
Yes.
Keier?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
All right, Lisa.
I'm so sorry. And you have to leave in like 25 minutes, so, um, I don't have to come in tonight. I can come back.
Yeah, you can come back.
You're going to be coming back.
Yeah, just come to the office and we can just...
I'll give you a, I'll give you a call and set up an appointment.
Okay, I just don't want you guys to be like, oh, what a reason.
Now she's...
Now she decides not to show up.
Quickest fire we ever saw.
Harder to fire than all the same.
All right. Uh, Lisa, will you please read item B?
Consideration of Resolution 2025-022 Confirming the Village President's Appointment of Andrew Kekos to the Village of Holly Historic District Commission.
Okay. So, do I have a first to consider item B of New Business?
I'll make a motion to consider item B of New Business.
I'll second.
Is he in the audience too?
Yes, we have a motion by Wendell. We have a second by Ryan. Any public comment on this item? Here.
I'll just be...
Hop right up to the stand and please...
And, and, and as, as Andy's walking to the stage, I will, uh, so Andy and Regina,
who you're going to hear about in just a moment as well, um, have been, uh, really, their, their involvement with the community started with the dam. Um, you know, like they were very passionate. They live in the Mill Pond.
This is our dam guy?
What's that?
This is the dam guy?
Well, he lives near the Mill Pond, yeah, or he lives on the Mill Pond, but not, maybe not, you're probably thinking about Adam, but this is...
Okay.
So, but he's, he's Adam's neighbor, so. However, so Regina and Andy both have been like, you know, assisting in anything they can with that and through that, they've like really just been always there for anything we need within the community. And so in having conversations with them, I've been like, well, if you really want to assist, these are the needs that we have currently. And, um, Andy, just, you know, based on, you know, my, I've had many conversations with him now, um, I just felt like this was a good fit and I, I was the one that encouraged him to put in for this and, uh, you know, just based on his, his intelligence and his understanding of our community and wanting to preserve what is, you know, important to us, I felt like he would be a great addition. And so that's why I encouraged him to put an application into the village president.
All right. Speech. What he said. Hi, I'm Andy Kekos. Uh, nice to meet you guys officially, you know, for those who haven't yet. I really do appreciate the chance to be considered for, uh, this role, the Historic District Commission here. Uh, as many of you may know, I am a professional airline pilot and a training captain. So following rules, uh, making sure that standards are met is what I do every day. Uh, I think that my experience will translate well, uh, into this role, uh, to help be fair, consistent, and clear, uh, just like at work, following the process in order to ensure that the correct outcome, uh, is made. You know, different examples, you know, does the project meet the standards? Uh, does it preserve the history and will it keep our community identity intact? I believe that our Historic District is a big part of what makes this town special. It was one of the reasons why I fell in love with Holly, moving here three and a half years ago. Uh, preserving that history will not only keep our identity strong, but also help our community grow in the right way, like promoting businesses downtown, giving a hometown feel for the locals at the same time. Uh, whether or not I'm at work or in a council chamber, my job will remain the same, to respect the rules, protect the mission, and keep things moving forward safely and legally. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion?
So my vote, yes, would be contingent as long as the individual promises not Chemtrail Holly. You have order. When you fly over Holly, please.
Yes, I live there, yes.
Counsel? Counsel? Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosgala?
Yes.
Keier?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinberger?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
Welcome aboard. Lisa, will you please read item C?
Consideration of Resolution 2025-23 Confirming the Village President's Appointment of Regina Kekos to the Village of Holly Parks Commission.
Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Keier. We have support by Ryan. Let's see, any public comment on this item? Sherilyn.
My name is Sherilyn Everly and I live at 314 Hadley Street still. And one of the, um, brighter lights of the whole dam and the Mill Pond controversy has been getting to meet Regina and Andy. They are the people we want in Holly. Um, they got involved, they got, their voices heard, they put in the effort, and when I found out that Regina signed up and went to dam owners and operators skill, school on her own, it's like, yeah, this is, these are the people we want in our town, so thank you for inviting them and please support them.
Thank you, Sherilyn. Any further public comment?
Me and Sherilyn, we're really good.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion?
Oh.
I'm here if you need questions.
Come right on up.
So if, if Regina brings a quarter of the passion that she did, that she has been doing to the dam, I mean, she's taking over our legal lake level with the, you know, the Water Resource Commission, that petition process, she's working, she's working the team coordinating all of that, if she brings any of that to our Parks Commission, um, you know, she's already a natural fit for it, but she's going to do amazing things.
And let's get an introduction from Mrs. Kekos.
Hello, I'm Regina Kekos. You probably all know me from the, uh, Mill Pond Dam Committee. I'm the Public Information Officer. Um, I have to say that when Tim came to me with the whole idea for the Parks Commission, I was pretty excited about it, honestly, like, um, I'm a big nature lover myself. I'm really all about public recreation and accessibility for many people. Um, I believe in inclusion for many people and I think that our parks are on their way. Um, I think they lack a lot of engagement and I think that we could work together to bring forth a way to honor our wonderful history, but bring it forward into a new immersive way so that people could enjoy it now on an easier, more accessible level. And that's kind of a goal I have, is to bring that level to pretty much everything, so that's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Regina. Counsel, any discussion?
Um, I will speak up and say that I am just very excited to get to know you and to have you on this board. Uh, you bring a lot of energy and you're just highly intelligent and I'm just so excited.
I, I got one, I don't want to be Debbie Downer at all or anything, I just want clarification. Since she is on the dam committee, that won't affect that, right?
Not at all.
I just want to make sure so that she doesn't get kicked off one way or the other.
I think the dam committee is more of an ad hoc committee. It's not an appointment-based, it's volunteer group.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure she didn't get kicked off one way, yep. You know what I'm saying? I want to make sure she's able to do them both.
Good thinking. Anyone else?
I can say, as a former Parks Commissioner, it was my favorite Holly Village Board to serve on, and I think you will enjoy your time there.
I am sorry I made you decide.
Throwing that off.
Counselwoman Cole.
I'm sorry, you know, yep.
Okay. So Shannon has been kicked off of two boards that she really enjoyed because of me.
Counsel is next.
She was, no, it was for counsel. She was taken off of both, um, she resigned willingly from both library and parks to be on counsel, so thank you, Counselwoman Cole, for your dedication.
We do not want her to drive aside by side.
Any further discussion, counsel? I've watched, um, Mrs. Kekos work tirelessly to support the dam and to show transparency to the community and deal with the media like a pro. That's all I got to say about that. Um, on a personal level, uh, anything you mention, I don't care what it is, 20 minutes later, she's going to call you with a complete backstory to it, a history of it dating to its origin. She's all about origin stories.
Uh-oh.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Keier?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinberger?
Yes.
Cosgala?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
Lisa, will you please read item D?
Consideration by Village Council of an overnight parking lot plan for the downtown district and approval of TCOs 25-04 and 25-05.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was zoning out. Do I have a first to consider item D of New Business?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
I have a motion by Cole. I have a second by Ryan. And now, if, uh...
It's snow on the future.
Tim, you could please introduce this item?
Yes, and I see Chief is, uh, approaching the podium. I'll do a brief introduction and then he'll take it from there. Um, so as everyone knows, we've been looking at our parking, uh, plan. Um, obviously, there's a lot of codes that we have to, uh, ordinance that we have to rewrite and do a lot of that. And so I've had a discussion recently with Chief Narsh, um, our Utilities Director, Brian Clausen, Danny Rathsburg, about, all right, we only have a couple more council sessions until we have snow. And so what is our plan for this winter? And so from that, this is, uh, what we've developed, uh, as far as like how are we going to answer that so we don't have the same, uh, issues, uh, moving forward? And it is part of the parking plan, it's just the things that we feel like we have to initiate now in order to meet those requirements. And from there, I'll have Chief Narsh take it.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and, uh, counsel, thank you. Um, first, I want to apologize on behalf of Chief Watson and I, purple is not in our uniform allowable colors, so, uh, we're, we're not, we're not in council uniform tonight, so we apologize for that. Um, so as you know, we had presented a master plan parking, uh, overall concept, uh, a while back, and counsel had approved that with the provision that we come back, um, and with each of these aspects of the plan. Uh, this one is, Manager Price had mentioned, is being driven, uh, primarily by the oncoming snow. Um, budgetary constraints kind of put the brakes on us. We were kind of caught on guard by that as well as everybody. So other parts of the parking plan we're, we're going to implement slowly. Um, but this plan was very, very important because of several issues. One, um, as I'd mentioned when I outlined, uh, the overall master plan of parking, is we have presently 12, uh, well, 21 parking spots in our two main parking lots downtown, our municipal or public parking lots, and those are designated for overnight parking. And that's where the majority of our overnight downtown, uh, residence park. However, we have 33 designated units for residential occupancy in the downtown district. Now, that's simple math. Um, some people are going to have more than one vehicle, so clearly we weren't meeting that. There were a lot of things that were reasons for that and we've, we've discussed that as to how we can rectify that in the future, but we have to manage that. So the only thing I could do, and that was under the past administration, uh, I went to them and I said, look, we, we have a math problem. Um, I'm not good at math, so that's why I got in law enforcement, but that I can count to. Um, so the only thing we could do is, um, suspend enforcement and allow people to park in those lots. The problem with that is the primary lots that our DPW does when we have snowfall and especially during the December 1 to March 30 time period, is to get those lots cleaned first, and that and the on-street parking. That frees up parking for our business owners, our residents, and most importantly, our customers, uh, down, that come to the downtown. Uh, the problem with lack of enforcement is these lots were filled with cars haphazardly throughout the lots and there was no way to clean them. Um, in, in working with our DPW staff, um, they had clarified for me that that's the primary, is these two parking lots, and then they moved to Crepo second. So some of the overflow in Crepo is not going to affect, they can clear those lots out. However, in order to, uh, effect this change, we need to make this area also, anyone who is in violation of that no parking 3 a.m. to 7 a.m., it's got to be a tollway zone. Um, during this timeframe, will, we, we have a kind of a discussion plan in place where the director will contact me, um, on heavy, heavy snowfalls that are somewhat predicted, but sometimes they surprise us, and he'll let me know where the some problem vehicles. Our officers will go out, try to in advance, move those vehicles. They can be ticketed, but if they don't move the vehicle, it doesn't allow them to plow the road. Um, and a lot of times we'll get success and we'll have that form of education with the homeowners, if it's snow coming, you gotta keep that vehicle off the street. However, in the parking lots, that doesn't work. Um, this, uh, would be the first phase of this. It's the simplest in that really, for the most part, these parking lots are staying the same. Um, the overnight parking that currently exists is going to remain. And I think that, uh, in my discussion with some of our business owners, um, they were concerned that we might modify overnight parking in different spaces. They liked the closest spaces, uh, to the businesses for their customers, and I agree with that. Um, so we're not really modifying our public parking lots, we're simply adding 16 spaces that are on the north end of Crepo Park, and those are going to be the spaces that run along Martha that are between the two exit and entrance drives. Those are the closest to a sidewalk, the closest, uh, to get them back to the downtown area, so that's going to be, um, dedicated as overnight parking. And we, we believe that that's going to resolve the issue, but we do have to, um, part of the discussion for the tollway is we have to, by state law, we have to list that in the traffic control order and then on the signage, and I've got proposed signage. Um, and, and that is something that administratively, I want to, can I clean up in talking with Director Clausen, some of the signage down there, we can do it with less signage that's more obvious. Um, and that's the plan.
So first, um, any public comment on this item? Hearing none? Seeing none? Counsel, any discussion?
Well, I got one. I don't think we need to have it say necessarily overnight if we have downtown resident overnight parking. I don't think we need to have an overnight parking sign too because then people will think they can just park overnight.
I'm, I'm sorry, repeat that.
You have it on the, you have, right here, you have downtown resident overnight parking, but then you have two signs right here also you're showing with overnight parking. It doesn't specify that it's a downtown resident parking area?
We have Airbnb, we have other people that may need to park overnight for different reasons. Would, would you say that?
There's still downtown residents, anybody in the downtown, what I was trying to delineate, and the arrows, those signs aren't necessarily in the same spot. Um, I sent those to the manager, we're going to...
Those are examples, just...
Those are examples that are going to go, those are primarily going to be in the public lots. What will be in the other lot is the, and the reason I wanted to simply designate, it's kind of like if you put a sign out that says 24-hour parking, meaning it's just for one day. Um, a lot of folks legally and, and the courts can assume that it's vague in that anybody can park there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just keep going with that parking. So the fix to that is 23-hour parking. That's clear and defined. Um, with this, it isn't necessarily that people are downtown and they want to hang out with some friends over two blocks away and there's no place to park, they, so we're going to use that as overnight parking. overnight parking. These are designated for the downtown parking district. And that's where most planning and zoning, when you build a, a home or an apartment building, you have 1.5 or two vehicles per unit, and that's designated in. And our downtown is kinda tough because they have zero. There's a long discussion we can have as to who's really responsible to provide parking for downtown landlords. I mean, municipalities will do their best. But I, I wanna designate to take away the confusion that this is for downtown resident overnight parking, kind of overflow from what we have.
I know some residents are concerned about lighting and plowing.
Well, the, the purpose of this is plowing. And I think they're gonna find that it's, it's gonna resolve it. I honestly believe that. It's gonna resolve it. Lighting, I think, is a part of a larger master plan issue that the village is looking at downtown, 'cause certainly that's important. But I, I think that area is kinda good if you compare it to other areas of the village, but it can be improved. But it'll certainly, this, this part of this plan is to resolve the, uh, the snow plowing. And it should do that. I'm confident.
When you, you put in here that this could require modifications to the farmer's market, like what would require the modifications to that?
Well, I, I wanted to think outside the box, so I, I wanted to have that discussion. I, I put that in so we could think that through. Certainly, we use that for a lot of public events and things. But we have to back up a little bit and say, what is the priority? There, there is no other places that we can designate parking. But I just wanted everybody to kinda put that hat on. And as a community, as a council, as departments and department heads, how can we communicate? I think Tim had already communicated, or Manager Price, with the farmer's market. In the event, some of these spaces are used for different events, we do have to pull these out and designate these for, for parking. I just wanted to kinda let everybody be thinking that.
Now, on the flip side of that, I think it's Brighton, one of the municipal lots, it simply says, "Farmer's Market Saturday, Lot Closed." So you can't park in those spots. So there would be ways to mitigate that, taking the spaces away. So for instance, if it's during the day or someone's not spending the night over, they could say, "The sign's up and you're gonna have to move your car because there's a farmer's market here," and if it's not, it's gonna be towed.
You mean having it bounce back to the farmer's market? I, I think-
So for instance, we would say, there is a, have signs up right next to the no parking signs. I think Brighton does it. It says, "These spots, you cannot park here during the farmer's market days." So if they park there, they must get towed.
And we're not saying that it would prevent the farmer's market. We're just saying that some of those spaces, they've kind of done overflow. So the farmer's market would still exist.
Well, I think the farmer's market now utilizes those spaces.
Well, I think this is what the signage is gonna do, and there's two things that come out of that. And it's a very good comment, because again, Crepo Park is kind of a catch-all for us downtown. However, again, I'd have to list those as a towaway zone, but more importantly, I'd have to be able to delineate and determine that this is not a downtown resident. And that, that'd be-
You can tow them regardless. If there's a sign up, could we not?
Well, you mean having a sign that nobody can park there?
No one can park there on farmer's market days. So they, like, like you mentioned, I understand we have a-
We could even do like, could you do a time?
Sure.
Because, you know-
That's right.
From 10 to 2.
That's right.
Are you talking about the spaces that's like four farmer's market booths?
Yes.
Better places?
Yeah.
Those four could be moved.
There's 16 spots.
But it's four booths. It's only four farmer market booths.
Put it on Martha Street.
You still-
I would say it's probably more than four.
How are the people gonna get out if they're on the other side? It just sounds like a very messy situation.
Well, I'm assuming you're taking the driveway to the-
This is sausage that we can make. Like, we can figure this out with the farmer's market. I have not reached out to Diana yet, but I need to reach out to Ms. Regan about it and schedule time where Chief Narsh and I can kind of talk about this right now. It's not gonna affect this year, farmer's market, but like plan for next year, how are we gonna do this?
I would say it's not even just farmer's market. I mean, if we're doing holidays down there, I don't necessarily want, or Dickens Festival, or all these other events, that I think we could say, "You just can't park during these periods of time when we have lots of people out there."
Well, now, now we're talking about temporary signage, 'cause we're not gonna have one stationary signage for each of those events.
How about we just salt the heck out of all the-
But I have the floor. Please, thank you. I, I'm less about towaway zones and more about utilizing the grass in the further back area of Crepo for some of those tents, I think, for some of those stalls, because they don't, sometimes they use it back there on the bigger farmer market days, and sometimes they don't. So I can't imagine why they can't all fit in there in non-parking spaces.
Thank you. And, and I think that's the discussion to have, and we have time to do that. And the reason it's important and part of, and to the question on time, in, in an overnight parking space, you really can't put time because you have people that work midnights. So their overnight parking is from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So we, we have to think of it in the, in the conformity of Michigan Uniform Traffic Control signage and regulations. So what we're doing is we're meeting all Michigan requirements under the law. We can modify that any way we want to after we put this in place. But we've gotta address the parking issue that we have. We, we have too many people living downtown for the spaces we have. And this, this will resolve that. I'm confident. And also our snow removal issue that has been a problem.
What about, is, is there something going on with, can you explain where will late-night employees park? Is there going to be mandatory parking at Crepo for our downtown employees?
No, this has nothing to do with that.
Okay. Thank you. I, I had a resident ask me that question. I really wasn't certain. So, thank you.
Kinda wherever they can, like, what they're doing now.
Okay.
I also have another question. Instead of designating it downtown residents, would it not just be more beneficial to just be overnight? I mean, are we limiting the people who park there to only residents of the downtown, or anybody in the village who might need to park there overnight? Like, do we need to specify downtown residents?
I think right now-
Are we giving that space for-
When Chief Narsh and I talked about it, so we wanted to try to do this as least intrusive as possible. Because one of the ways we could do it is to have everyone that needed that parking register. And we really don't wanna have, we don't have, that's administrative work, and it's like, you know, more things that residents have to do. And so in effect, it will be just overnight parking for everyone. Until we, unless we get to the point where like, all right, this is a problem. We don't have enough spaces for the people to actually live here. Then we have to move to like maybe a registration program. But this is like just the next step, trying not to be as intrusive to the residents as possible as, you know, as we're trying to fix these problems. So.
And, and to add to that, one of the reasons that, and I'd mentioned that earlier, is what's difficult is this, this is going to take into account people who have multiple vehicles in those 33 units. We have 21 spaces. So if a husband and wife live there, or two, any, any individual, any, anybody that has a couple, and they have two cars, we don't, we, we're not going to supply spaces for somebody who has three cars, right? And they come downtown, they're gonna park their cars. We're gonna monitor that. But anybody who has more than one car, we, we really kinda have a need to provide that for them. So the whole purpose of this is kind of the downtown. But to Manager Price's comment, we're gonna see how that goes. It's, the other parking spaces have self-managed themselves very well. And I'm pretty confident that if our residents downtown, especially with the towaway zone, the other zones, if they're not able to find parking here because other people are using it, they'll let us know. And then we can look at a, a lot of other options. There's other things that we can do, but this should resolve it kinda for, for now. And then we can give it a year to see how that gets us through the winter and to see how the residents, 'cause what we're doing, another thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna craft a letter that I'm gonna give to our new interim DDA director, and she's gonna work with me on this, Jennifer. And we're gonna present this letter to all of the landlords and to all of the tenants. So they kinda have a clear understanding of what's going on. And then any feedback they have on that, I'll have my phone number and email address. So if they have concerns, they can reach out too. And I think that, given about a, you know, through the winter and into the spring, will answer where we are.
And just to clarify on the TCOs, just, Danny had mentioned this too. Correct me if I'm wrong, if things have changed since our discussions, but we're only talking about for restricting the middle spaces in those parking lots as they can't overnight park there because of the, the snow consideration, right?
Any space that's not designated overnight parking? So right now, we have, I'll call it the bittersweet lot across from the post office. So right now, we have 12 spots there, which one of them is a handicap overnight, which I think is good. We're addressing those as well. So a lot of this is going to, the, the interior management will change, but there's 12 spots there, and those are gonna stay the same. So everything else that's not a designated overnight has to be clear. And the, in, in those lots, those are the only towaway zones. Now, Crepo Park isn't regulated to that extent, and nor is, we don't own it, but the dirt lot that we all use that the railroad owns. So there are other places where people can park, but those lots, we've gotta pull those out. It's my understanding the DPW cannot get in there and plow with those cars in there. And that is our primary lot to bring our customers, our employees, and everybody right now. And, and we're not, we're not able to do that.
Okay. So I think it's, I, I think it's important to give preferential parking to the residents, as opposed to someone, you know, that could maybe just have their car parked across from the moose on, on that dirt parkway behind the railroad tracks. So I, I think even signs are so prohibitive. I know if I saw a sign that said, "No parking, it will be towed at owner's expense," I'm not gonna park there. And I'm not gonna know if there's oversight, if there's a registry for it to show I'm a resident or not. Now, don't everyone go all spreading that around, you know? But what do you think about that?
Um, just because it says-
Just having a sign to say, you know, resident parking only for overnight or something?
Well, it's going to continue to say that.
Okay.
It's still gonna say resident overnight parking in those spots. They're, they're there. We're gonna improve the signage on those spots. And then everything else will say towaway zone. You'll see the big sign on there that says, "No parking 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. towaway zone." Those are gonna be at each entrance and at areas where the largest pool of cars aren't overnight parking, 'cause it says designated area. So we're gonna clean up that language. And the other thing we have to consider is people that live in the downtown district, sometimes will have guests over. And where, so that confuses a registry as well. So this is actually a, a really effective, and I know it's used in other communities, but it's an effective way to manage overnight parking. I think, let's give it a try and see how it goes. And I, I'm pretty confident I'll get feedback from our, our landlords and our tenants.
Are we looking at this only seasonally? Or are we just designating these spaces overnight parking for the whole year?
It's, it's gonna be the whole year. It's gonna be year-round. This is a permanent TCO. However, the towaway zone is seasonal.
Okay.
So, and, and that was, if you have, if you see on that sign, I have that to match our snow removal emergency ordinance 7201. So that's gonna be December 1 to March 30, 'cause that's the major time. Now, you could still be, you, I'll say, you may be ticketed if you're in that area, because the sign says it's no parking 7:00 a.m. 3, or 3:00 a.m. 7:00 a.m. But you wouldn't be towed outside of that time period, because that's our snow emergen, emergency removal time. So we're trying to, trying to consider everything.
Jim?
More questions. Do we need to set a fee schedule? So-
No.
Nothing needs to be in here that says it's gonna be towed at the owner's expense or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Well, who pays to tow it then?
I'm sorry?
Who pays to tow it?
They do.
Well, then that's what-
I'm just-
Well, I mean, yeah, it doesn't-
There's a penalty or something like that.
There, there's-
We have to approve the, we being council have to approve the fee. So as long as that's not required, okay.
Well, no, he just said they pay it so that tow it owner's expense.
Well, an answer to the question you've already, council's already designated that. So in your ordinances, there is parking fines, and that's regulated through other parts of the ordinance. So the towaway zone just says it's on you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you expect any extra costs for this program?
Just signage. And I think actually Brian said he's got some of the signs. But we're gonna, I, I, you know, I'm, I can't stand sign pollution, right? You, you can overdo signs. And so there's a little of that going on. So we're actually gonna reduce some of the sign pollution in the parking lots, and then make them very clear. They're gonna meet Uniform Traffic Code standards on height. That's the thing for me is, you know, if you pull a van in there and the sign's blocked, it's not fair. So I think everyone is gonna find that it's clearer, more obvious, and less ambiguous, ambiguity.
Counsel? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any last minute discussion now that the presentation's over, counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item E?
Consideration by Village Council of Ordinance 473 to establish a construction board of appeals concerning the still Duroset Hale Single State Construction Code.
I'm glad I asked you to read that. Do I have a first to consider item E of new business?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ryan. We have a second by Wendell. All right. Tim, will you please introduce this item?
Yes. One of the things I've learned after tonight is I also need to add phonetic spelling for myself on some of these things, as, as we've gone, whether it's names or this. So as counsel knows, a lot of my focus has been cleanup on many items. And one of the things that we've been doing is going through the ordinance and, and, you know, charter ordinance, and, you know, really seeing all the things that we need to clean up. And you have a couple items on your agenda tonight, and you're gonna have several more items in the future as we're going through it. Really, we're focused on the bigger items that need to get, you know, changed. The smaller stuff, I've probably got in the first 30 pages, 200 items that need to be like corrected, whether it's spelling, or it's, you know, just a gra, a grammar thing that could change the meaning of it. So, so, but some of the bigger items. So this one specifically is, there is a state requirement for us to have a construction board, board of appeals, which we currently do not have. Attorney Gildner can probably provide a lot more clarity on this as well, as, you know, he, I know he's worked with several other communities developing this capability. But essentially, the construction board of appeals, any community that does their own building, building code, or they, they are, you know, have a building program, they're supposed to have a construction board of appeals that if a resident has an issue that they do not believe we are interpreting the code correctly, they can appeal it through this board. The, the specifics of this have all been provided in your resolution, and I got several different drafts from the village attorney that we've kind of compiled this. And we met with our charter and ordinance committee to review this. And this is what we've presented to you today. Did you have anything else?
I'm happy to answer any questions, but other than that, no.
Okay. We will start with public comment on this item. Not every one at once. Hearing none and seeing none. Counsel discussion, please. Seems pretty cut and dry. Bunch of nods. Would it be three people?
So we've changed to five. And that would be because the, we, we talked about three, but just the quorum issues with that, as well as the, the kind of people that we would like on this board would be people that are developers, have construction experience. I mean, in a limited community, you know, the people that we'd want on this board might have to recuse themselves from a vote, if they are part of that development or building on that. So, so that was a consideration there as well when we met with the, the team. And so that's why we went from five to three, from three to five.
So Bill, that was here earlier?
Yeah. Bill, you know, Bill would be a, a, a good person.
And so it would be one council liaison as opposed to three of us?
It'd be, it's one council liaison and then-
Four community members.
Yeah, four community members. This would be like your zoning board of appeals.
Got it. Okay. If there's no further discussion?
If it was the council liaison inside the ordinance area that says, "As an ex officio member," does anybody change the liaison over that?
So ex, ex officio just means, by virtue of your official capacity.
Right.
Correct? So that you're still a voting member, but you just, it's by, so if you were removed from council, and you were on this position, you would also be removed from this committee. Am I, is that the correct interpretation?
Yeah, yeah.
So the liaison and ex officio, so do not negate one another?
No, they just, it's just, it's a, yeah, it's a term that, that you are only in this position by virtue of your position as a council.
I'll, I'll just check, 'cause I think other ordinances use liaison, so I just wanna make sure they're entertaining.
Okay.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Does anyone on council volunteer?
I can volunteer for it.
Can we add, uh, Thomas Ryan to next month's agenda, please? Thank you.
If any community members would like to send in a citizen participation form for this, uh, that have building, construction, development experience, we'd love to see it. You have to fill four more, four more seats, one down.
Okay, Lisa, will you please read item F?
Consideration of Village Council of Ordinance 474 to amend Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances by removing Chapter 117, which prohibits marijuana establishments.
We're a little late to the party.
I'll make a motion to throw that one out.
Oh, hold on. Oh. Tim, will you please introduce this item?
Yeah, a, as we talked about with our cleanup, obviously, in the past, uh, yeah, I think it was 2022, well, this, this particular ordinance, Chapter 117, was created in, uh, 2019, specifically prohibiting 2022, we changed our ordinances to allow, uh, these facilities, uh, and as far as zoning considerations and all that. However, what we didn't do is repeal the chapter that prohibits it. So, this is one that we felt, all right, we should probably remove this chapter, uh, from our ordinance as it's conflicting. You're going to see quite a few of these moving forward as well.
Okay.
So, there, there's also, uh, other, uh, portions of ordinance that prohibit possession, that's going to just change the language, you know, that we're going to have to do a little bit more thoughtful language in, rather than just completely removing a section.
Okay. Any public item, any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, discussion?
We need, uh, we need motion.
Did I not already do that? I'm sorry.
I made, I made the motion to throw it out.
That's right.
And you'll have to carry on it.
Yes. Can we have a motion to consider item F of new business?
I'll make a motion to consider item F of new business to remove Chapter 117.
Support.
I hear support from Ryan, I hear a motion from Wendell. Uh, now, any public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, okay. Any discussion, counsel?
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay. Um, Gildner, is there anything else that we need to know about? I, I mean, this is just the repeal process when we're late to the party, this is a normal...
That's right, um, so, when, when you adopted that, uh, that most recent change, uh, it had the effect of, um, of rescinding that previous one, all this does is make it express.
Okay.
When does it take an effective date? Is that of today?
Isn't it two weeks from after the minutes are...
It should start in your resolution when it takes effect. Immediately this one.
Oh, this is immediate? Okay.
I believe it has to be, um, I think it takes effect after it's posted in the, in the paper. I think it has to be posted.
Well, it says this, this, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon publication.
Publication, there we go, okay.
I guess if I had two seconds down further, I'd figure it out.
As soon as we get it into Tri-County, all right. She already typed it in, we're good to go.
All right, there we go, all right, that's good.
Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion, counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyer?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
And Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item G?
Consideration by Village Council of Allied Building Service Quote for Concrete Walls with Two Courses of Block, Infill, and Slab on Grade for the Move of the Holly Depot Not to Exceed Amount of $185,000.
Do I have a motion to consider item G of new business?
I'll make to...
Okay, we have a motion by Kyer.
I'll support.
We have support by Cole. Now, Tim, will you please introduce this item?
Yeah, so this is part, uh, this was brought to us by the, the depot, uh, committee foreman, Pete Stouffer, who's been, you know, doing all of the coordination for this. We had previously looked at doing a full basement, um, but that proved to be cost prohibitive. Um, you know, we needed to dig it out in order to move the depot, and so this is the solution, uh, for them in order to, um, you know, to actually be able to move the, the, move the depot with Wolf Movers, who is your next, uh, your next item of new business. Um, but this is like, what they have to establish before they can actually, uh, move the place. Again, it was, before, it was, um, three or four times this expense for a basement to be installed. Yeah, this has been a, this has been a process.
Well, and I, I already heard one WTF. So, um, just to clarify, this is not from village budget?
This is not from village budget.
This is from, we're just serving as the fiduciary to the tax depose donations and grants.
That is correct. They kind of decide what they're doing with it.
No, I...
This is not from our budget at all, yeah.
Okay, um, next, let's see, um, any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none? Counsel, discussion? Oh, I'm so sorry, Jane, come right up. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jane Byssissessa, and I live on East Holly Road, and I'm a Holly village resident. I'm just curious, is this item budgeted? Thank you.
We actually just answered that. This is not village taxpayer money, we are serving as the fiduciary. So, I'm, um, you know, ordinarily, we don't answer questions right after public comment, but because we just went over it, I'll bear repeating, because I would like everyone to know, this is not coming out of the village budget. This was raised over the last decade or longer by the volunteers that have been collaborating to gather grants and donations to move the depot. We're simply their fiduciary, so we have to, you know, sign off. Thank you. Um, any other public comment? Did I miss anyone else? Okay, discussion?
Where do I begin? Well, let me see, first off, $185,000, and the company cannot spell our address correctly? Spell, am I correctly? My dad did foundations for I don't know how many years, and a three-wall block, two-high-tier brick, block wall on top of a board wall, $185,000? Come on now. I don't, no, uh-uh, I, uh, no. I could get the backhoe from DPW and do it cheaper than that. And then it says that bracing walls not included, that bracing is required prior to backfilling basement walls, and then structure and nearby is in design. If you're going to charge me $185,000 to make me a walk-up basement, I should be able to brace those walls and put backfill in to put my building on top of it at $185,000. The foundation that it used to sit on where it's at didn't cost $185,000, even today's money back then. I just, I'm, I, I can't approve that, because for one, if you're going to ask for $185,000, you should at least make sure you spell maple right and put our correct address in there. So, what other oversights are we going to run here from these people? Because that's an important thing to me. If you can't do the proper things right, how am I going to do my job right? Because best believe it, I will be out there, just because I am on the depot move committee, I will be out there scrutinizing everything they do and making sure it's done the way it's supposed to with the offsets and everything else. Not in ground up roughing them, but I'll be making sure and then reporting back to the right departments.
In regards to the financial concerns of Councilman Wendell, um, how many bids were solicited?
They, uh, Chief Watson, are you there? Um, if you, if you want to, I don't know, you were part of this process as well, but, uh, and Ryan as well, um, they reached out all over the state in order to try to find people that could do the historic basement or do this basement work. They've been looking for a long time to find, uh, appropriate people, and this is, um, the way that they've looked at, at how we can actually mitigate those costs. Chief Watson, did you have...
Take it away.
No, that's exactly right. Um, I missed the last depot meeting, uh, and I did not seen the plans yet, uh, and I agree, Mr. Wendell, that the price is a little bit higher than normal, uh, but we've had extreme difficulty in finding a contractor that would even have interest in this. Um, so, we've been working with this contractor exclusively for probably six months, uh, came at the reference of the architect from the historic committee, um, and, you know, we did have to put some hi, historic significance bearing in the decision, uh, and I think that was part of the reason. But we did get that number down, I believe, over $200,000 from the initial, um, and then it was, uh, I think, $400,000 with a basement on top of that 185. So, uh, it, it has come down quite a bit within budget reasons, um, but honestly, it's just been difficulty, uh, finding a contractor that was willing to do the work that we were requesting.
Yeah, I'd just speculate, sorry, sorry, to speculate, do we know why it's so hard to find a contractor to do this? Is it because it's a small job, or...
Is it specialized?
It's specialized.
Okay. So...
Yep, the building weighs, uh, I forget the exact amount, uh, but several tons. Uh, it's not your standard construction building that you would see in today. So, the, the slab, the concrete, the footings are quite more substantial than what you would see in your normal commercial or residential structures, uh, ju, just due to the weight of the depot today.
So, it's going to be, uh, so it's specialized, and they have the credentials, I'm assuming, and they've got the...
License and insured.
Licenses and insurance was next, so if something were to get mucked up, they're going to fix it at their expense. Um, and this is over 50% cheaper than originally quoted?
Yes, well, without the basement, yes.
With, okay, I see, without the basement. So, this is just for the...
There was a lot of debate between a basement, a crawl space, and then just a slab on grade. Due to budgetary concerns, we went with the slab on grade, and then, you know, some other issues with storage and use of the basement and other things, uh, that we won't go into on ours where I have holes tonight, um, but we felt this would be the best course of action, uh, to get the move in place and the building relocated, uh, and still meet the criteria of the grants and the fundraising that was already in place.
I'd like to remind counsel, um, according to the purchasing policy, in instances where there are very few or only one experts, we do not require three bids. And sometimes that happens with certain things, maybe like this. Um, and when people are specialists, they do get to charge a...
Pretty penny.
Buttload. Okay. Protect, I didn't mean to get all science-y on you guys. Okay.
It's interesting, because the depot also weighs a buttload, so, same, same amount, so...
Well, I do, Brian?
Is it for, for Watson?
Yes, for Chief Watson. So, um, in your opinion, building official, is this a good quote? Is this something that...
I agree, yes. Um, I haven't read it in detail, like I said, I missed the last depot meeting, uh, but we're talking with the other department heads and manager, Tim Price, uh, I believe that they are being fair and equal, uh, meeting these numbers.
And Chief Watson and I sat down with them at the fire department with Allied and the foremen and members of the depot committee, and, uh, well, a couple of them to really look at, hey, how can we bring this price down? Because we couldn't afford, what, 700,000 or what the initial quotes were. Um, so we really worked with them and found different solutions in order to...
And they are also passionate about this project. Uh, they are historic members, and they actually want to do this job. So, I think they came in a little bit under what they wanted, uh, just to be able to do this job and put it on their resume as, um, a project that they were a part of. Uh, they've worked with us on other parts of the project as well, just with their historic significance and, um, skill set.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, did anyone else have a question for the chief?
Not for the chief, I got one, a quick one from Ryan.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
No, it, it's just simple and easy and fast, probably. We don't, got no concern of it sinking though, right? There, with, uh, because you, are we, we always say Holly's built on a swamp.
Yeah, they, they've been made aware of the soil conditions, so they've taken that in consideration for the footings, and we dug, actually dug to see where the water table was at down there, and it's a little bit better soil than we participated, so...
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks for your passion on that, Daniel, you inspired some good questions.
I'm sorry I get so passionate about, I just, it, I don't know, sorry.
No apologies necessary. Um, any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyer?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
I should have said, can they at least fix our address, though?
I'm sure the message will get relayed.
Oh, I'm sure.
You, you know if they watch this meeting, someone's kicking themselves in their own butt right now. Lisa, will you please read item H?
Consideration by Village Council of the updated quote by Wolf Movers in moving the Holly Depot with a change of work order in the amount of $18,000.
Do I have a first to consider item H of new business?
I'll make the motion to consider item H of new business.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Wendell, we have a second by Weinbrunner. Any public, wait, where am I? Tim, do you want to introduce this item?
Yes, I, I introduced it a little bit, uh, previously when we talked about, um, uh, the, the last one, but this is just a reflection of Wolf Movers, um, who are the ones that we've already contracted, we've already approved their contract to move the building, but now with, to reflect the changes of not having a basement and how they're going to have to modify their plan, this is just the modified quote that they've provided, uh, to, uh, Mr. Stouffer and that we have here as far as to reflect how they've had to change their operations in the opening of the meeting.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Jane? And once again, your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Jane Byssissessa, I live in East Holly Road, and I'm a Holly resident. Okay, so, I thank you, Madam President, for explaining how this is funded, but my question was, is it budgeted? In other words, when you put this budget together for the, uh, movement of the, uh, of the Holly Depot, I'm sure you have a budget, so you know where the money's going to, and I, I appreciate your response. Now, looking at this item here, can you tell me, Mr. Manager, through the council, of course, tell me what exactly did this change order, uh, require, please? What is it that you did for this $18,000? Thank you.
Any further public comment? Hearing none, seeing none? Counsel, any discussion?
Again, just me with a harassing one, uh, it's not capital EA, it's just capital E. And I don't, I, I don't know about Brian's, but I don't think it's a capital K, it might be.
Counsel, any further discussion? Jim?
One question. So, Wolf says they're going to be putting it 16 inches above the foundation, and on Allied, they're going to build something that's 48 inches tall atop the footings. So, is that accurate? So, is the footings, or is the foundation where the footing is, is, that makes sense? Because to me, it reads like there's, Wolf is only quoting us to move it 16 inches above the foundation, but Allied is putting a 48-inch wall on top of the foundation.
So, what they're, in my understanding of this, and I'm by no means an expert, you know, we need Pete here to do, to explain it, but, so, what they're doing is, essentially, Wolf is having these robotic things that lift up the depot, it goes down a ramp, and correct me if I'm talking crazy right now, so, and that it slowly raises, uh, or the robotic things lower as it's going over, it's going to maintain it at an elevated position as they put the, as they build, um, they're going to have built a foundation, but they're going to have to do the rest of the foundation and build the, the rest of the...
Brick?
The brick or the work underneath it as, so that, I'm not sure of the heights, again, that would be a Pete question.
So they're gonna be doing the second, two layers of brick as the building going across town?
After it's established and secured, yep.
Jim, does that answer?
So I don't know, do I have, am I reading the proposal incorrectly? As long as there's not an issue with one saying we're only going sixteen inches and the other one saying we're going forty-eight inches?
The forty-eight is from the footing?
I think that's the crawl space wall.
Yeah. So, I, again, this is, these are questions for the foreman.
Danny, do you feel qualified to answer some of these questions? For the record, he gave me the psh. Okay. Jim, are you satisfied?
As long as they're not concerned, I'm not concerned.
Okay, Wendell?
I think Chief Watson, looked like he wanted to say something.
I can answer the question if you did.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah.
So the frost line is forty-two inches. So we have to go below the forty-two inches, but get below the frost line. So forty-eight inches will be the equivalent, above that will be at the frost line, and then you build the foundation above that. So the math does equate.
Okay.
And then the building will be coming in place, the robots will be there, they'll raise it, they'll put it on blocks, and then they'll move the robots out, then they build up to the bottom of the depot, and then they'll remove the iron beams from the depot and then block where those beams were.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The math is mathing.
All right, I actually do have a question. So is this to be paid before Wolf House movers mobilize to start the job? Do we have a date set for when they start the job, so it's not, we pay and now we're waiting for them to come do it whenever they want?
I don't know. I don't know.
So, yeah, so the date has been, so, you know, it was supposed to happen in April, then it was supposed to happen in September. I don't know what the current date is, but the thing is Wolf has got the racing, they are ready to move it. Like, they want to, they want to move it, and that's the reason that we've kind of expedited some of these things. I don't know the exact answer, but they're, they're ready to go, as far as from Wolf's perspective.
Right, I'm just worried about the date, because what if they get a bigger project and they push us back?
Well, that's why we're trying to push it, because that, for that exact reason. So we're trying to expedite it, so, because they want to finish it before they get anything else. Is that correct?
Or the snow.
Or the snow, yeah. We're trying to do it before the winter. We're trying to do it this year, still, obviously.
So they don't get ticketed for this three to seven AM parking spot.
For a building parked in a railroad zone.
Good question, Thomas. Any further discussion?
I would just like to reiterate, this is a committee that has funded their own grants and their own fundraising. It's been going on for a decade, and we are just overseeing their budget. This is not the village budget. Just putting that back out for the record.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item I?
Consideration by village council of budgeted purchase of information technology equipment for the Holly Police Department not to exceed amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents.
Do I have a first to consider item I of new business?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I hear a motion by Ryan, I hear a second by Weinbruner. Okay, Chief Narsch, it's all you.
I will start, but this is a budgeted item, but just so everyone knows.
I didn't know if you had a lead in.
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you, Counsel. Briefly, so this was anticipated, this was budgeted, I brought this forth in the budget process about a year ago. We received word from our IT provider for the police IT, which is Clemis, and that's our connections to the FBI and all of the secret data files and all that stuff. Windows eleven, most of the systems that we have have to be Windows eleven compliant, or they're gonna shut us off, because the FBI and CJS have all these requirements for the patches, and that's what's failing in the Windows ten to Windows eleven. So our systems and just about every police agency out there had to go through this. So I, these are sole source providers, as Council President Brandon had issued earlier definition of that, it's only equipment that Clemis can authorize, that's the Dell mobile data computers, so half our fleet had to be replaced, which they were kind of failing, we were having problems with them anyway, putting money into them, some of these are ten, twelve years old, but they weren't Windows eleven compliant. And the same with our desktop operations, and that was a hundred percent of our desktop computers. So they'd throw a switch on us on October twentieth and we wouldn't be able to do anything. It has been budgeted and it is in the budget.
Thank you, Chief. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Any discussion, Counsel?
One item.
Yes, please.
So I did look up on Dell to see comparable prices, and this is actually cheaper than listed on Dell's, so I was happy to see that. The other thing is, I think if we're using taxpayer funds, we don't have to pay sales tax. So this quote does include sales tax, so I don't know if there's a way we can save our residents six percent, but if we can, that'd be great. It will?
Yes, we'll, we'll have that resolved.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So you're suggesting that it's going to come under the do not exceed amount listed?
Okay.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
Enjoy your new computers.
Before we move on to item three and we move into closed session.
Madam President, would you, as we had new items added-
Oh, that's right, so those need to come over here.
Would you entertain a motion to move items J and K or table them to the end of the meeting, so we can do items that were moved from the consent agenda?
Yep.
I would like to move, I move to move item J and K to the end of our new-
JK.
JK and L to the end of our new business.
No, there's only JK.
I'll support.
Should be only JK.
No, I pulled H.
Well, there's JK, HK, L from consent.
But we're moving J and K.
J and K are closed session items, and now we're gonna have LM and N.
Got it, J and K are closed, so.
That we will do now.
Okay, so I will remake this motion. I will make the motion to move J and K to the end of our items of new business.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Kyre.
We got there.
Second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Wasn't sure if I heard everyone's voice there, motion carried.
So now we have a need to-
To-
H.
H. So H of consent, Lisa, will you please read item H from consent?
Consideration for approval of the special event application for the Holly Dickens Festival lighted parade on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and can I have a, I will entertain a motion to approve this item?
I'll make the motion.
For discussion or for?
A motion to approve. I have a motion by Kyre. Do I have support?
Support.
I have support by Ryan.
If that's how you start the discussion, you have to make the motion for it first.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel?
I'm the one who polled it, only because of the fact I figured we, they would be better off trying to use going down Airport, Hartner, and then Bevins to do their lineup for their parade, instead of trying to do Airport and Thomas, and only use Thomas as the exact-
Overflow if needed.
So Daniel and I both just came off of the Holidays Parade and had a different way of lining up cars on Airport. Daniel was great at doing that, and what we found was a safety issue that we were able to control traffic and kind of limit how people were walking and driving in that. So all that we were thinking to do is add Bevins to that-
Hartner and Bevins.
Hartner and Bevins to their application. They could choose to still use Thomas if they want, but it gives them the option to be able to drive around Bevins so that floats can come up Airport and Hartner without blocking traffic on one side of the road.
Does staff-
We just want to add, we were thinking, an extra two streets.
Does staff have any objections?
Do they have a number of participants? I'm checking.
Can you say that again, Brian?
Estimate the number of participants.
Yes, I was gonna say, usually they're, they don't have a lot of parade floats.
We had thirty, how many do we have at the Holidays?
Thirty, thirty?
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, maybe? With including Kyre, we had thirty-five.
We're only for a hundred.
And we went, just on, just, we went down Airport and then like-
They weren't actually parked on Bevins, they went down Bevins so that trailers could pull back up, but it did at least allow them space to pull up without people trying to back up floats.
I mean, this means the estimate's gonna be a hundred, but this is, so that would make more sense.
I'm getting confused, I'm messing up.
I knew what you were trying to say.
Thank you.
We don't want to take away their way of lining it up, we were just hoping to give them extra options.
Right, and that makes sense, because last year they had forty-nine and they're hoping to have a hundred this year, so that would help things keep moving, so that it doesn't impede traffic on Airport.
And if we could make sure we have a barricade again, thank you so much.
So.
No, the DPW did great for Holidays.
Oh, they were wonderful.
The thing they dropped off was amazing, I appreciate that.
And I think Chief would agree for traffic control.
Yeah, so I just took a look at that, that's perfectly, it actually makes sense. So on this one, I issued temporary traffic controls, those don't have to come to council, and I'd issued one for that, and we'll just amend the temporary next year to include that, and you're fine.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Kyre, would you like to amend your motion to approve this item, including the addition of, was it Bevins and Hartner?
Yes, I will amend my motion to include the addition of Bevins Drive and Hartner Drive to the parade application.
Ryan, would you like to amend your second?
I amend my second.
Okay. And Counsel, any further discussion? Lisa, will you call the roll?
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried. What was next? K?
K.
K from consent.
New item M.
Lisa, will you read new item M?
Consideration for approval of traffic control order twenty-five dash oh-one for stop sign removal on Sherman Street for eastbound traffic at East Street.
I will entertain a motion to consider item M.
I will make that motion.
Cole?
I'll-
Support by Kyre. Motion by Cole, support by Kyre.
And I'll kind of introduce it a little bit, obviously this was pulled from consent. These are already items that we have done, I think, believe both of these are in response to the middle school opening and some of the changes that we've seen, and that we've already done temporary traffic control orders, but to make these changes permanent, that's why we've brought the TCOs in front of council.
Narsch?
Well, I think, was there a question?
My question is, as I live on this street, I have witnessed how the traffic is going down East Sherman Street as it's getting towards East Street, and we have quite a few walkers. And the stop sign, in my opinion, has been one to help slow that traffic, it gives a stop before others. There's no sidewalks in any part of those neighborhoods, and as we are moving in, you have students in the road, you have buses going down there, they have tree service trucks, there's a constant flow of traffic, and the stop signs, in my opinion, I was hoping as a traffic control measure to stay, but I'm not sure what your opinion is, so that's why I wanted to bring it to discussion.
Okay, and thank you for that. I'm not gonna give you my opinion, I'm just gonna give you Michigan law. So trap, stop signs cannot be used for speed control. Stop signs are to assign ownership at an intersection. So there's traffic warrants that go into consideration before you can place a stop sign that determines who has the most volume of traffic, and they prevent people from colliding in intersections. So somebody's gotta have ownership assigned to an intersection, and then that's based on volume. So in this case, they made it just one continuous street, it's just so there's no ownership to assign. I know there's advantages to having multiple stop signs, but that's, technically, it doesn't meet the requirements for traffic engineering, so they have to come out. So the effect of this traffic control order simply rescinded the traffic control order that placed it. But to really answer your question, we're doing multiple traffic surveys down there, we're gonna be doing traffic counts, we're doing, I'm working closely with our schools and administration to see our walking patterns, because nobody knows. And we're still trying to figure out, they advised us recently, I've been trying to get data from them for a while, but some of it, they didn't know, to be fair, but how they're moving their buses and how staff is arriving into the school, and that comes up in another TCO that I think may have already been approved. But, so it is a continual study that's going to be going on, you're gonna see traffic counters in there, we're bringing in our external engineers. It's already paid for, we have a consortium fee that's paid, so Traffic Improvement Association will be doing some counts for us in a lot of areas.
I have seen our officers there, I think they're doing their job and trying to monitor it. As somebody who has lived there when that was a school, and it was sixth grade and different grades were there, the students do walk down Sherman Street, and they walk down East, and they walk down Harden, and there are no sidewalks. So these are kids, once it's time to plow, that have no access to getting over humps in the road of ice and snow. So they are in the road when the buses and all them are going to be driving past them.
Yeah, and I'm not a fan of that, so we're gonna look at that, we've got to.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
So this is for Chief, but for Council, I'll recall, I think one of the municipalities I lived in, there was some study that they did, there was some study, right? And I think it came back that more stop signs were actually causing people to speed up. So what happens is, you get to a stop sign, you speak, then you get to an exit, then you speak, you go back again, and they found that you have better traffic flow if they're not stopping the traffic. Whether or not that's the case on that street or not, I don't know, but I would-
Here's the actual answer to that, so it's called the eighty-fifth percentile. And what does eighty-five percent of people do, and this is actually an engineering standard in Michigan, so what do eighty-five percent of the people do when faced with a traffic control or an intersection? And the majority of people will find what's kind of the correct path, they use that for speed analysis, too, sometimes. But more importantly, what years of engineering has discovered, that an improperly placed stop sign will cause two things. The speeding to get to and from them, but the people will blow the stop sign because they know there's no reason for that stop sign being here. So then the countereffect of that is, you have children who are out there, or anybody that's out there walking, thinking the stop sign is protecting them, and I tell everybody stop signs do not keep you safe. I know it's odd to even think for a second, we have these big signs all over the country and it says how fast you can go, yet nobody follows those.
Those are the optional ones.
Yeah, the ones that are all in white.
So, but, but the sad reality is, is they actually become a danger because there's a false sense of protection by a sign that isn't properly warranted, then if something happens, they come back to your traffic engineer in your community, which is me, and then that's, and you, and say, well, why was that sign allowed to be placed, had it not been there, right? So liability gets attached, so it gets complicated.
Counsel, any further discussion?
I guess another, only other question would be to address the concerns of students coming out there, is there another device we could put in there or potentially-
Sidewalks?
School. I was thinking like the one where lighted crosswalks.
There are sidewalks on Bear Street. There are sidewalks on Bear, there is an option to get to the school with sidewalks, but it is a longer walk for people who live at the school.
Well, one of the things that, and this will come out again in the next item that was pulled down, I'm not sure we pulled that down, so I'll bring it up, but I'll talk about it here, too.
Maple Street.
Yeah, crosswalk. So part of that is, I'm having in constant communications with our school administration, so one of the things we're gonna do about the crosswalk, I'll wait to talk about that, but we'll do it here as well. And that's why we're doing the studies on the walkers and the traffic flow, is the schools are going to, whatever we decide is the best course of action. So, I'm going to issue a memo to the superintendent of schools. They are going to put that as being a school and police, this is what we need you to do kind of thing. So, the routes may be different. And the schools are going to push that. The teachers are going to be driving that message for safety. Here's where you have to go. They're going to send that home to the parents. They're really going to publish this out, but we want to have the right data and kind of know what we're talking about. But the schools are partnering with us to get that message to every single parent, every single family in the district. So, we're hoping the education process will help.
Counsel, any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Keier?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried. Lisa, can you please read item N?
Consideration for approval of TCO 25-02 for the installation of a crosswalk on East Maple Street.
Do I have a motion to approve item N?
I'll make the motion to approve my, I'll make the motion to approve item N.
Motion by Wendell?
Second.
Support by Keier. Nash?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there was a question on this. It was brought down, so I'd like to maybe address any questions.
Counsel, who pulled it? Who asked the question?
I pulled it. And the reason, the reason why I pulled it was just, can the school pay for that and not, not using the spare one we had? Because I did watch the DDA meeting yesterday and it was brought up in a very good point that we would need one on Saginaw Street downtown, but nobody communicated with nobody. And I thought maybe, well, it's, the school could pay for that one and we could utilize the other one downtown that we needed.
They are. They are paying, they are paying for the portions of it as far as the traffic control order is just to establish.
Well, I think I know where he's going. The schools are going to pay one hundred percent of this project. However, the flashing traffic pedestrian beacon is the only one that we have. So, again, as your traffic engineer, I have a choice to put that where students are going to cross on a busy road or where shoppers and adults are going to cross downtown. We have a lot of signage and other issues. Personally, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not in favor of putting that on Saginaw because of the other condensed what's down there. There's, there's already extremely slow. It just kind of doesn't meet the warrant and I, I would not bring that as a recommendation to you.
I trust your opinion.
And this one, and thank you, sir. And this one is, we're going to, these are, these are going to be self-actuated. So, this is not a crossing guard. These are older children, it's going to be self-actuated and it's going to stop, it's going to stop Maple Street traffic for them.
And it's not the hog.
So, where exactly is this going?
This is going about a hundred twenty-one feet from the center of the intersection at East Road coming west on Maple. And we moved it away from the intersection. So, just to be safe, I even took this to our TIA Road Commission engineers and they looked at it. Of course, this is into the village, so it's not theirs. We pulled traffic survey, we looked at everything. And this is the, every engineer said the same thing, that's the spot. We even removed a tree, thanks, Ryan. We had a tree that would have been blocking, it was a village tree, but it would have been blocking visibility from some of the eastbound vehicles to see the children. That's why we moved it away from the intersection. That's the safest spot for it. And there's thermoplast going in, so it's going to exceed, actually, the requirements for a school crosswalk. And by putting that flasher beacon in there, it's kind of super safe, they're not going to go too far and then they're going to have the one for Hollyell. So, that's kind of become our school zone. And we're in the process right now, just so everybody knows, working with the Road Commission there because where the advanced signage has to go, it's kind of strange how this works, but the Road Commission has to authorize the school's speed zone. I tried to get them to do one big one because their start of their speed school, school zone for that school is going to conflict with the end and start of the other one. So, we're going to play with that a little bit. But it's just kind of a school zone. We got the high school, the middle school, and Hollyell all on the same roadway. And so, our traffic counters are going to be really interesting, but we can't do those until I-75 opens because unfortunately, all of our traffic counts are going to be skewered by the diversion traffic that we're facing on all of our, all of our roads. Not our side roads that we're talking about for buses and students, but certainly Maple. So, we can't even lay this out until I-75 is open and then we're going to do some traffic counts. But the sidewalk will be in, thermoplast ought to be here pretty soon. And it's just one more safe thing for our kids to get across.
Just a quick question for you, Chief. I live literally right across from Hollyell or whatever, so we already have that sign, which is great, but we have not had anybody to cross the kids in the last two days. Are we going to have enough people to man those crosswalks? Yeah.
We do. We actually have extras. So, I'm glad you brought that up. There's, people are supposed to be there. So, this is news to me.
Uh-oh.
First I heard.
You're not sorry.
If I may inquire further, which two days were those, ma'am?
Today and yesterday, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Yes, one question.
Yes.
So, I remember we were talking, I don't know if I was here for this or not, previously, the discussion was the middle school and North Holly. And I think the discussion went, why can't the middle school or school district pay for something, a road improvement? And I think the answer was, is the school is not allowed to pay for anything off their property. So, what has, what has changed from this?
A school's not allowed to pay for anything off their property that wasn't placed in their request when they ran for the village. So, when they applied for the village and the funding for this, they included signage and safety. So, because that was in their request, it services. Normally, under state law, a school district can't pay a dime for something outside of their boundaries, whatever that is, unless they specifically include that in their ballot initiative.
Good call, John.
There's always a quid pro quo.
Yeah.
Proviso.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you. Chief?
Thank you.
Public, any comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none. Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Keier?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. I will entertain a motion to excuse Wendell from the rest of this meeting due to family obligations.
I will make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Keier, support by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Bye, Daniel. Okay, before we move on to item J and we move to closed session, I would entertain a motion to have reports presented at this time.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Cole? Support by Brandon? Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Keier?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried. Reports, please.
All right, I'm going to, there's a lot of things going on, so I'm going to rapid-fire a lot of these things. And if there's anything that we want to expound on, let me know. In July, I met with the Oakland County Road Commission in regard to the traffic signal, a traffic signal modernization project at Grange Hall in North Holly or Saginaw Street. In accordance with, or in conjunction with our small urban program, the scope of the work would involve reconfiguration to a box span or mast, arms with reflective backplates, installation of a flashing yellow left turn signal, ADA compliant ramps, and traffic signal detection upgrades for an adaptive signal system, basically modernizing that intersection where the Marathon building is coming in. This project's cost included about three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in federal funds, about a hundred thousand dollars in local match, which is going to be provided by Oakland County. So, it's going to be at no cost to the village for this project. So, approximately five hundred thousand dollars. This planned construction is scheduled for the fall of 2026. Recently, we met with the Marathon Station, the Marathon Station project that's being developed there. A contingency upon their site plan was that they had to create a right turn lane at that intersection. They are working with the Road Commission to ensure that they have all the correct permits in order to do this, but because of that modernization of that intersection, it will slow them down from actually creating that right turn lane. So, we're working with them right now in order to give them a temporary certificate of occupancy in order to allow them to operate in that, but with the contingency that once, that they have to do that right turn lane onto that road before they get a full certificate of occupancy. There's still some hurdles they need to clear with right of ways and such, but that's ongoing right now. As probably is going to mention with council reports, the short-term rental registration was brought up forth at planning. On Thursday, myself, the planner, as well as our building official, Chief Watson, will be meeting to discuss what that language would look like so we can provide a proposal and how we could restrict short-term rentals within the community based on the Planning Commission's guidance. Continuing to work on a capital improvement plan, I'm hoping to actually have the draft version of that to the Planning Commission to review at their next meeting. Again, this is a wish list at this point until we figure out some of the other considerations, but at least to have a draft, so we're continuing that process. As well with planning, we have, we had one graduate, as I mentioned at the last meeting, from the Citizen Planner Course. Our insurance, MMRA, is going to refund some of those expenses for those planners, for planners that go to this course that reduce our risk as a community by having trained planners. And so, we're hoping to see if some of our other planners would like to go. At my coffee with the manager the other day, Ms. Everly expressed that she wants to be the best planner in Michigan and so that she wants to get a bunch of this training. So, we'll see, we'll see who else is involved, that wants to get involved with that. The, the DDA met yesterday and the DDA and my, well, Ms. Stoffer and Jerome have met and we, based on council's guidance, we created a joint position that we've gone over some of our, our thoughts on what that might look like. And so, this, what I'm about to pass out to council is what that, what the, we've kind of looked at, we went over this with the Personnel Committee of council as well, they gave their input. So, this is a combined document. I don't need votes on this, but I would like council's input. If there's anything that the council sees that they would like reflected or changing it, please let me know and we can work on it. Again, I don't need council's approval for this, but because it was a council initiative to change it, I want to make sure it meets your guys' intent. So, pass these out. You guys can...
While you're doing that, Mr. Price, is it possible to do like a joint DDA, maybe council thing now that we do have this new interim director? I know we've talked about potentially sitting down with the entire council and the DDA. Would this be a good opportunity to potentially do that?
I think, I think it is a good opportunity and I think, I know that it's been brought forth to them as an idea. I think we just need to schedule dates and make an official request of this.
And that way, like, we can get to know?
Yeah. And so, maybe, yeah, and we can talk about potential dates and I could reach out to them as well, or the DDA liaison, the village president could also help facilitate that. Quick update on the, as well as, since you're passing that out, you can pass out this, too, and I can get the rest of the audience. So, these are just based on our cityhood presentation that we had at our last meeting. There were some changes that council wanted made to this one sheet page, and so this is just the update to that to reflect it. I'm working with staff in order to get all of our, the other thing that we want to do is try to do some financial analysis of what cityhoods would look like. And so, that's what we're working on now. We're looking at, all right, where is our current water and sewer, drawing the lines, make a map, meeting with the assessor's office. We're meeting with the assessor's office, I'm also meeting with Oakland County to try to get some more realistic numbers from that rather than just, you know, you know, me doing estimates, getting like some actual data from that. Holidays, I already said, you know, how instrumental Sarah was in this, I just want to reiterate, you know, how much she did. You know, there was, a lot of people already mentioned, you know, on council that participated. I did want to give a specific shout-out, Danny, all day, you know, anything that we needed, he was out there doing, as well as Brian and his partner Juliana, they, like, they, not only did they, you know, spearhead like the hot dog, you know, the meal to five hundred residents, but they've been doing this for years. And they have many other years, they did this without us. We did have some additional volunteers helping, but they have been just, you know, just silently doing this every year. And so, I just would like council to really push Brian, no matter what he decides, of retirement this winter, that he definitely has to stick around to do this at every holiday. So, we'll, we'll, we'll keep poking him for that and seeing if we can...
Bribes are allowed when he's out of office, right?
Yeah. So, another great thing, you know, as you probably noticed, one of our residents at one of our town halls that the village president and I have been hosting, mentioned, you know, some of the ADA compliance or buildings that don't comply with ADA. We've talked to some of those building owners, but also, our village offices didn't have handicap parking. From that, our TPW went, and as you can see, we now have not only handicap spaces identified, but we have parking spaces identified. We're going to look at what our actual parking needs are here and this, hopefully, maybe we're going to branch out, maybe get additional parking to meet our requirements because as we've got the mark now, you'll notice that there's not very many spaces if we have a, in a council event that we've had in the past where we needed a lot of space. So, we're going to see, we're going to throw out some proposals. I know that we've had some quotes already done, you know, just about like what it would be to expand it and do that. So, we're going to give some, we're going to talk, we're going to engage the Parks Commission, we're going to engage council and just see about some different ideas to creatively do, have more parking here without losing a lot of our green space that we don't want to damage. Another great thing that's happened, we have, the fire department has brought on a, someone that has volunteered to work as our chaplain for like crisis events, for not only for fire, but also police or anything we have. And they went to attended, his name is Chris Nuth. Chris Nuth, and they attended some training in Ohio that is specifically tailored for this. And so, we're going to be spending some more time with him, engaging him so that we have a plan going forward if an event happens that we already have it planned out, that it's not, because when the event's happening, no one's thinking about that stuff. But we need to make sure we're taking care of our people in this manner. And so, I just appreciate Chief Watson for, you know, his foresight and like planning this out and getting us there. And we're going to work with the police, fire, and all of our staff to make sure they know that this resource is available as they need it.
All right.
At the, our ordinance committee met and they, we've, based on our previous ethics issues that council had brought up, we've made some recommendations. That will be another ordinance change. Based on some of the language, I just want to make sure, the reason it's not on this council agenda is because I want to send it back to the committee to make sure that it reflects the changes they wanted, as well as get the legal review from the village attorney as well before proceeding. RFP, the audit, RFP is going to go forward shortly. However, we are, as we discussed in the last meeting, we're already in the audit season. So, the village clerk is, and myself are starting the audit process. We've already met with Plank Moran to kind of start that process going. And really, we sat down with them and had realistic expectations about like, all right, this is, you know, we want you to keep us in check. We want, like, this is the reason that, you know, council had an issue in the past and like your job is to, and we, there was a back and forth conversation. They, they want to make sure we had their correct expectations and we've had a really good meeting with them and we've started that. Obviously, if you've gone to the Ren Fair, it's been going on. We've met with the Renaissance Fair general manager and talked about how can, in the future, can we coordinate with them and, you know, within economic development and maybe possibly have opportunities that we can cross-promote? You know, if people are coming for the Renaissance Fair, how can we get them within our community as well, as well as, you know, so whether it's advertising, you know, the event at Bella Alley or if it's cross-promotion with, within the DDA, we're throwing out some ideas and also coordinating some of our services with them as we can. We had coffee with the manager on Monday, I had the interim director Jennifer Finney with me and as well as Chief Nash and Chief Watson showed up for some of it. It was, you know, we had a few people come in and Cheryl and Everly, she spoke earlier and she, you know, was very involved. I think it's a great opportunity and I would encourage more people to come out and participate. Since our last council meeting, the village president and I also had our town hall and I felt like that was, we've, we've been getting better and better at the town halls that we've been doing and I felt that was a very productive and great conversation with the community during that time. A dam, a dam update, so last week, the village attorney submitted our closing arguments for, for our hearing with the dam, with Eagle. And we're hoping that we hear back in the next week or so from the state on their ruling on that. I did want to say, I know that Bill, I came up and spoke on that. I wanted to accept some of that responsibility, too, in that, that, so the village attorney and I have been working on, he has a laundry list of issues that we're working on within our community, as you all already know. And within that, you know, him and I do like updates weekly at least on like, here's our priorities and things. And that's, that also has slid on my radar, off my radar sometimes, too, on Bill's specific project. So, I don't want the blame to be on Mr. Gildner because it's my, it's my responsibility to tell him what our priorities are and I have not always communicated that with him about And I have not always communicated that with him about that particular project as well. Although we've had conversations, it's something that has, you know, slipped off and I haven't prioritized it as such. But we will and we'll take care of him.
Mr. Price?
Yeah.
I think I might, uh, Mr. Gildner's already addressed it and the email's already been sent to, uh, Mr. Bai.
So, well, there we go.
I, I was going to talk about that myself, but.
Okay. Yeah. So I just wanted to, uh, you know, we have, there's so many issues going on and, um, that he's assisting us with. And, um, you know, and then the other comment that was made, um, about, um, the school resource officers and what they should be doing. I just want to remind people that the schools are paying for the school resource, resource officers when they're there. And most of the people that we have that are school resource officers signed up to be school resources office because they're passionate about that and that's what they want to do. And so, um, to say that they should just be on the streets working, well, they signed up to be SROs. Um, and so that is, and the schools are paying for them while they're there. So, and that was my update.
Uh, so that's very kind of Tim to shoulder some of the blame, but I don't think any of it belongs with him. Uh, I was very surprised when Mr. Bai stood up and, uh, gave me a dressing down, uh, here. Uh, because while I knew I owed some things to Tim, that was not one of them. So as he was speaking and after he, uh, left, uh, I've been going through my emails, uh, trying to figure out what did I miss and when did I miss it? Um, and sure enough, it was, I found it from, uh, August 19th. Tim had sent me an email and it was in my red and deleted folder. I don't know how it got there, uh, but, uh, there it was. So, um, once I pulled it up, I read it and, uh, I corresponded and said, he made all the changes that were noted. And so it's, uh, acceptable. So that's on me, not on, uh, Mr. Price or anybody else. The only thing I'll point out in that respect is, um, you know, uh, he was responding to my letter dated June 19th. Uh, Mr. Price's email to me was August 19th, two months later. And the, the changes that I was asking for, the changes that he made, they were not complicated, uh, things. So, uh, there's certainly a delay between August 19th and, and today, but there was a two-month, uh, uh, gap there waiting, uh, for it. So thank you, Mr. Price, for doing it, but I think it's taken care of. I'll accept responsibility when it's mine and somehow I, I missed that. That's all I have.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gildner.
I did miss one of my notes too. Sorry, if possible. Um, so, and this was based on, uh, some, uh, I know that, I've talked to several council members, um, then a lot of individual business owners, um, have come up recently and asked us to make special exceptions for them on specific items, to amend the rules for them, to allow them to do certain things without going into specifics. Uh, I mean, I'm sure that some council members have been presenting this as well. And so I, the, the guidance that I've given to staff on this, on any of these items, um, is that as an organization, only, only way that we're going to, uh, professionalize is that we are going, or that when our rules are going to outlast the relationships. Until then, we are going to be continued to say, well, it's just a good old boy club or the rules don't matter if you, you know, if you know the right people or you make the right donation. And so, um, so in, anytime that we will change our practices, uh, to benefit the people we like, the operation stopped being a system and they start being a performance. And that performance feels good to the person on stage, but it makes everyone else in the community look for those back doors. Um, councils has never asked me to do any kind of thing like this. Your guidance has always been, no, set the standard and make sure we're following it. And so I'm just, and on public forum, I'm just saying this is the, the guidance has been given and this is what we're doing. Um, like, we, and the way that we're going to show kindness to our residents, I believe, is by giving them a clear path to success, uh, not by giving out passes to people. And I truly believe that the best way we can protect our residents is by protecting our processes. This also has added benefit of everyone on staff knowing what the answer is before time, so, before it. So they don't have to bring everything to me to see if I'm going to make an exception for this. They know what the answer is because it's already been written down for them. And also just that, you know, what I've expressed, if there's just one standard across the board and if that standard is going to change, it needs to happen. And it's, if the standard needs to change, it will happen, but it will happen in this room with these people making that decision to change that standard that's been, uh, expressed to us. So.
A point of clarity, you said, um, I'm not asking who, you said residents, not staff, not council, you said residents?
Oh, yeah. This is not, staff hasn't asked me. Staff understands where we're at. Uh, this is residents and business owners that want special treatment to, um, whether it's, you know, uh, taking care of like personal things within their, their, the right of way they're responsible for or, uh, within their business to have special exceptions.
Sure, sure. I just misunderstood you at first and it was like, where is the ethical meeting at? Okay. But it's, it's residents and businesses. Okay. Thank you for that.
The audacity is at an all-time high, apparently.
Any other staff reports?
Well, I just have a few things. Um, so I'll just piggyback on what Tim had said. We, um, did meet with Plant Moran. They are going to be on site in the first week of October. So I'll be working diligently. They have right now roughly, we, we're doing, uh, a sharepoint with a lot of their items. So we got, we've got about 69 items that, uh, between Tessa and I that we have to get together prior to them coming on site. And then the, uh, the second thing is, is that I've been working with, uh, CDBG. I've been having multiple meetings with them, with the reprogramming that you guys did at the sidewalk. So we're trying to, um, collect some of those monies that, for the code enforcement that we reprogram that money for. And then additionally, there have, they, um, about every week, they either have a technical call or a, um, or like a, I'll call it a question and answer or meet the people kind of thing. So I've been getting with them too because our, um, applications for the CDBG for the 2026 will be coming up and they've added a few more categories. So we're going to see if we can potentially, um, put those, um, get some more monies for different items rather than just code enforcement or other things that would still save us money in our budget. And then, um, lastly, um, I had, um, something that Tim had brought up. I've been working, I was, I did have a meeting with MMRMA. They came in and did a risk adjustment. And I believe Chief, um, Watson was there with me as well. And one of the things that they had said that, um, would potentially help us within our village is that if we could look into getting an employee assistance program. So I know that he was working, getting a, hiring a chaplain. Um, I am going to get some quotes for us and, um, particularly three, because there's three companies that I can particularly go. I've got one coming in and, um, what the, what this particular companies do is, like you said, when there is a traumatic thing that happens within the, um, village, they would have people come on site and help us and, and have counseling and things like that. And it could be th- this particular one that I was talking with, they, all of them go by how many, um, members or how many staff you have in your village. So this particular one has a, um, a straight out price. If anything under $200, it's a flat rate. But they don't, they don't do like, oh, we're just going to come on site. They do more like where they do it on an issue basis and then they have a 96% resolution rate, which is a pretty high and good rate. Um, also they, um, some of the other things they do is like if we want to promote somebody that's into a new position, they'll do training. Like, so for example, I know, bad subject, but when Brian, you know, leaves, if they want to promote somebody, they would come in and because it's a new leadership position, they would do training and that's all included in this price. So, um, again, more to come. I'll, once I get all the quotes, I can bring that to you guys.
Thank you, Lisa. Staff? Go right ahead.
Good news begs to be shared. So, uh, we are now a Holly Police Officers Association. So we're a 501(c). We have formed that. Um, all funds are now in that account. And, uh, we're licensed through LARA, through the state of Michigan and the IRS. So it's the Holly Police Officers Association. Um, you'll hear a lot more about us. Uh, that's, the donations that we receive will process through that. And that's the proper way to do that. Then we will have, uh, accounts for, and I say this to anybody that's still online listening, um, any donations for the pantry. We have a sub-account just for the pantry. So we can track every dime going in and out of that. We have a sub-account just for our shop with the cop program and then the other benevolent programs within the police department. We're now licensed and operating as a 501(c). Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
If a resident were to, um, encourage or, or were to nominate someone for a key to the village award and they had to purchase it, could that money be run through the 501(c)?
Certainly.
Okay. Great. Thanks so much.
It's all part of benevolent things that we can do within the community and the police department is here to assist in doing that.
Laundry money legally.
Well, I would say it that way. But do good things with donations from within our community and that fits that.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Laundry are.
She is not. Well, so, uh, I, I would like to point out that the plaques and awards that we've given away have always come out of the pocket of the person who nominated, which so far has been me every time, except for once when it was, um, Dick Rosell nominated somebody and, and he paid for that one. So, um, you know, these awards are not free or cheap either. Um, so any more staff? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay. Uh, Jim, let's start with you today.
Perfect. Um, so the finance committee has met. Is it okay if I give a quick run, rundown? Everyone's okay? So we've got some pretty big changes, I think, we're, we're going to go for, um, or we're, we're going to propose to council. We haven't actually got all the numbers figured out. Uh, staff's been, as you hear, they've been busy on a lot of stuff. And we've asked for more information. We've got all the information, but I think now the next step is having a consultant run through it and say, this is what makes sense and this is how you can pay for everything. So I can go through a couple of things here real quick and talk about, um, uh, some things that I think we, we were talking about that we would like to change. Um, right now, everybody pays the same exact amount for, we call it bond debt currently. So we don't think that really reflects what it's used for. So it's, it's more used for like capital improvements. So I think that it really sets it off, I think, if we see, we call it capital improvement. So I'll just refer to it as a capital improvement. So everyone pays the same capital improvement charge, no matter if you're, uh, a big, this, big building, a big warehouse that uses tons and tons of water or a house. So I think one of the municipalities, uh, other buildings I looked up, um, they had like a $20,000 water bill and they were paying $25 in the capital charge, where I have a $100 water bill and I'm paying $25 in capital charge. So we can't charge more, um, water is water. So we can't discharge more per unit of water because you're using more of it. But what we can do is, is essentially if someone has the potential to put a higher demand on the system, we can charge for that potential demand. So for instance, if you have, if your water meter size is this big, you're not going to put nearly as much demand on the system of someone that's got a water meter this big. So then we can charge proportionally. Other municipalities do that. So our system always has to be able to, uh, provide water and be able to supply that big, the big, uh, water. Makes sense? So we were talking about raising it up if you have a bigger water meter and if you have the same or change in it, uh, if you have the five eighths inch or, um, I think it's a quarter inch, if I'm not mistaken. So that was one way. Um, so right now we have a number of lawn and garden water meters. I think we, I don't have the number. I think it's like 600 or something like that. But I don't believe right now they pay a capitalization charge. So we were talking about adding something on there. There is a fee associated with that. So I have a water meter. It's a second water meter. And right now I don't pay anything extra for it except for usage. We were talking about, uh, and I've, I've been working on this one since January. So we went back and we, we talked to some, uh, individuals, uh, that were on council in 2002, talking about making the parity between the township rates and the village rates. So right now, everybody pays the same rate, no matter if you're a village resident or if you live in a township. Well, in 2002, or before 2002, rather, they used to pay double if you lived outside the village, double the rate. And then with Bolt in, I think Bolt happened in 98, there was concerns that it wasn't legal. And, uh, that's been settled. And so the Michigan State Supreme Court has ruled on it that you can charge different rates if you're in a municipality versus outside of a municipality. So we've been working with staff to come up with a system to, um, quantify the costs a little bit. So I would, I would hope it would be less than two times, but there will be some type of difference simply because being a village resident, we pay for a lot of the hidden expenses that you may not even think of. Even the roads that, the driving that we pay for and all these other little hidden things that township residents are paying for. So we have that one. Um, another one we looked at was a per-unit fee. So I know there's a lot of derivative questions. We can, we can talk about it too, but, uh, a, a per-unit fee. So for instance, um, previously for, for history, the village was, we didn't charge extra for apartment buildings. So if you have one meter on an apartment building, you got charged one capitalization charge. Well, I, I believe that changed in, I think it was some time ago, we got sued by some apartment buildings and we wanted in court saying, no, we can charge per unit. Well, come to find out, the, uh, the retirement communities, for instance, they're just paying one capitalization charge. So some of these, if it's like 300 beds and, let's just say 300 beds, that's potentially a lot of usage that's not potentially being accurately accounted for or multiple unit Airbnb's. So if you have one meter and you have, let's say, three units in an Airbnb, potentially you're a very similar situation to the, the apartment building. Let's see. Right now we, there is no fee to turn on and off water. Come to find out. So we were looking at that. And lastly, um, right now you can go on BSNA and look up anything for free. Well, BSNA is quite an expensive piece of software. I don't know, I don't know the exact cost. But other municipalities, what they'll do is, uh, if you want to look up your water bill for your address, it's free. But if you want to go through and you want to look up other addresses, there's a fee associated with that. So that's one way that our village can recoup costs. Hopefully they pay for BSNA. And I think that's, that's it.
Great work. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, good work.
So, not me. We've got, we've got staff and, uh, I always, I always want to say here.
Okay, Kola.
This is when coal is easy to say.
Good job, gang.
So, and I've, we have looked up Bolt before and, and my neighbor, Mr. Love, will always say that we're in violation of Bolt. So if you go and read the, uh, for some light reading, if you want to do some light reading, the appeals court ruled on this of why we're not in violation of Bolt. So essentially if you want to, the, the short version is our authority existed. So I don't have, it's, I don't, I don't have to know this. So essentially we're not in violation. Go read, go read the, uh, the opinion of the three court judges.
Well, we, we bought off the judge.
Yeah. Those four judges, that would have to happen.
But for the record, we did not buy off any judges. And I have verified with legal before that we are not in violation. Buster. Thank you.
Charter ordinance met. Um, Tim already went over all of that, so I'm not going to go back into that. Um, I do have a question for Jim about the BSNA thing and charging other people to look up stuff other than their own. Would that, and it's also kind of for Lisa as well, would that result in more FOIA requests that might be cheaper to pay for than accessing BSNA causing more pressure on our clerk?
So I, I think I can answer that. Uh, my understanding is when, for instance, if you're an insurance adjuster or if you're a, the big power users. So if you're an insurance adjuster, if you're a mortgage company, you go out there and you use these tools for research. So I don't believe, and maybe I'm wrong on that assumption, but I don't believe that they're going to be sending lots of FOIAs in.
No, I'm not. For residents looking up, say I want to look up what your water bill was.
So, so maybe if a resident would want to do that, but I think the, the main capture point would be from these, these out-of-state companies that are trying to use the system and they're, they're currently getting it for free.
So I can answer a little bit of that, a little bit to give a little bit more insight. So, um, when we were talking about, I don't know if you guys remember, we began the budget, we talked about a lot of things. Right now currently, we're, we're paying $5,000 a year to have BSNA offer that service. And that contract ran through, is running through February, so I can't shut it off. I have to like let it ex, you know, extend. Well, we weren't, we were talking about not extending that. And then how, what happens is now, like you said, if you're a, um, a real estate agent or something looking out there, now BSNA will charge them to get the information out.
We don't currently do that.
We don't currently do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was, uh, Gremlin Township I was looking at. And I believe their cost, $6.95. And they have a message out there. If you're going to be doing lots of lookups, make sure you deposit a lot of money. So it seems like to me that, that, that potentially would be one avenue that if, if, and it wouldn't hurt our residents, is my thought. Because if you have someone outside the community that wants to use these systems that's paying for the service. Is that your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering for, for what that was.
Back to you, Thomas Ryan. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Kyra?
Yes. Uh, so parks met last week. We talked about budgeted items. Um, we got an update on, um, CISMIA for Gansha Park. We've been utilizing them to kind of identify some invasive species and, and how they can potentially be removed. Unfortunately, that division is being restructured, we just learned about, as is most things right now. Uh, grants are on hold. So that's. So that's kind of disappointing for us. We approved it tonight, but just a reminder, Halloween will be on October twenty-fifth. Holidays was this weekend, again, we've talked about this at length, but just wanna say thank you, yeah, to all of our staff who took time out of their schedules to help. People were running around on Friday picking up hot dogs and buns, and chopping up onions on the day of. What hasn't been mentioned is that Shannon Cole took over the parade in August. It was dropped into her lap, essentially. So this woman did the logistics, traffic studies, all this stuff, and came out with one of the most well-organized parades that we have had thus far. So her and Daniel Wendell deserve all the credit for that.
I will clap again.
At the last minute, had no sound system to announce, and Danny came through in a pinch, like, these are all the things that happen in these big events that people don't think about, but everybody just stepped in when there was a gap. And, as Sarah said, like, it's the heart of this community, and I just, I'm just so impressed by everybody this weekend, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thanks, Danny, I didn't know about that until now. Shannon?
Sue, hiya. They actually were our grand marshals of the parade, which I thought was absolutely amazing, considering that I did get, my first parade meeting was like August sixth or something, and I was like, okay, here we go. I do wanna apologize to any residents that were out there that didn't get invited. I did get a lot of emails that were haphazard and random, like, oh yeah, this person dropped this off, or this person, don't forget this. I do think there were people who were in parades past, at the last minute. Harvey Sorenson had somebody reach out to me, I would have been devastated to have ignored such a long-time resident. I just simply didn't know that he had always been in the parade. So anybody who got left out, I do sincerely apologize for that, I went in with no notes, so I had no idea. And, having participated as a driver in the parade for years, I had no clue what truly went into the years-long worth of work that it could have been, but was done in August, so. While I am also a public education employee. So let me tell you what August was for me, but hiya, they have been having some weird phone issues going in and out with their move. I can report their phones are back up, their offices are open, they are just steaming along, helping kids with skill-building. They have a shoe initiative, if you have students who need new shoes, need cleats, any of those kind of things, they are offering that to our residents. They do such great work, I'm glad we could celebrate them in the parade. Danny rolled with it at the last minute, without a sound system, at like twenty minutes to go. I'm like, oh my goodness, he's like, it's cool, I appreciate your calm under fire in that one. Holidays, I, needs Sarah McCany Award, I don't know, there would not be a Holidays without her, and I one-hundred percent appreciate her.
Thank you, Shannon. First, I will entertain a motion to excuse Tim from the rest of the meeting, he had some urgent family business to attend to.
I'll make the motion.
Yep, we have a motion by Ryan, we have a second by, was that Cole?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carried. Okay, I am happy to report, reports are coming in stating that the mics are working very well tonight. That's something we don't usually hear. In regards to Sherilyn Everly's comments earlier, I also was in favor of a forensic report, and I believe I did start investigating it, but it's, I, it simply wasn't in the... Actually, let me get back with Tim on that, and I will, I will update you guys next time. I will mark that for next time, I don't wanna misspeak. But I did agree with her that having one would be helpful. In regards of SROs, I, I do not agree, and maybe I can ask Narsh, but I think if I remember right, the schools pitch in on that expense, correct?
Not only, not only did the schools pitch in...
He said, not only do the schools pitch in, but?
But, the intrinsic value of the SROs, all across the country right now, that's the rapid race, is how can we get officers in schools? The communication they have with students, the, the data, the things we prevent are immeasurable, and the relationships that we form. So, and the good news is, I have, we have a position vacant, and I've received two applications in the last two days, so I'm really positive, and that's, also the off, the off-season, these officers cover our road patrol, so they are working the roads. And in the event if I need them, I always know where they are and what they're doing, and if we have an issue, the advantage of having them in there and in, paid for by the schools, I can pull three more officers to a scene. They can leave that school and assist us at a scene, so it benefits the community in a lot of ways.
I have one question for you, Chief, the state police do not offer SRO services, correct?
Correct.
So our SROs are community-based policing at its finest, in which the township does not offer that service. So we couldn't outsource it to like a Holly Township Police Department of any sort, because they utilize the state, and the state does not offer those services.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, both of you, and I completely agree with Chief Narsh about the intrinsic value. I feel safer knowing that the kids are protected, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues at a lot of schools across the country. I feel safer knowing that my kids have you guys.
Thank you.
Holidays, Sarah and Shannon really dove in and made holidays happen. Daniel Preka, he helped line up all the music, and all the volunteers were just so grateful to all of you. Everyone's been working so hard, the DDA too, they're making real progress on their bylaws, with a huge shout-out to Hillary. Every month, she's been sent away with more edit suggestions, and it is nearly nailed down now. Jennifer is the new interim DDA director, and she's already reached out to me requesting a one-on-one meeting. She's already diving into her work and networking, and I'm very hopeful that she will be part of providing a path forward for DDA and council to work together. And so now, I think it is time for me to entertain a motion to move into closed session.
I will make a motion to move into closed session with a five-minute recess.
After this five-minute recess, motion by Keir, support by Ryan, Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Lyra?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Keir?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. See you in five minutes.
Remember my name, so this is coming from a special. That was hilarious.